Long.
Present.
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Manulito. Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Thank you. We have five members present. We do have a quorum to begin our meeting. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, board members, and those in the audience. And Happy New Year, everybody. I trust you all had a good New Year. We have a new year given to us, and we hope as a board that we will continue to bring a lot of improvements to the school district. And we want parents and children to really help us make this become one of the best, or I shouldn't say one of the best, but the best school district in the state of New Mexico. And I want to thank Superintendent Hyatt and his assistant superintendents for doing a good job. And I know that you will continue to do a great job.
President Long, members of the board, I'd like to, since our last meeting, we had an employee pass away in our school district, Ms. Diana Bowman, and she was an employee at Crown Point Elementary and been with the district for many, many years. So if it's okay with you and President Long, we could have a moment of silence.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing I am asking for is also to remember in your prayers for the sister of Joan Naez. She passed on. She usually helps us here because of the passing away of her sister. She's out and will be back until next week, so keep her in your prayers. Let's go down to item number two, approval of the agenda. Board members, I believe you had time to review the agenda. What is it, the pleasure of the board?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to pull under our consent item agenda four E, I think that I would like to have more clarification, and I would like for this action, or this consent item agenda to have some, to do, for them to do a presentation. Also, I have a couple of additional questions that I would like to hear from the individual about, sir. Other than that, I would like to move to approve the agenda.
Okay. Motion's been made with consent item four E to be pulled from consent agenda. Board members? Then a roll call, Evelyn.
Kevin Mitchell.
Yes.
Priscilla Manulito.
Yes.
Michael Shaw.
Yes.
Chris Mortensen.
Yes, yes.
Charles Long.
Yes. Okay, we've adopted our agenda with a minor change there under consent agenda items. Recognition.
President Long, members of the board, we are always excited to recognize students, and we have a couple of great teams here this evening from Navajo Pine High School and also from Rema High School. And we want to turn the time over to our athletic director, coordinator of athletic activities, and have him give a, Mr. Chavez, to give us, get some words out. And so we're probably going to have the board go up to the front so that we can shake these athletes' hands.
President Long, members of the board, audience, thank you again. It is my privilege and honor to be able to be announcing some great stuff at the school board rather than, you know, a lot of the negative press that we always get. We have some outstanding student athletes here at Galtman Kinney County Schools. In the 16 schools that we have that offer athletic programs, we had two exceptional teams that we'd like to recognize. First, to kind of make this easy, let's start with if all the Rema volleyball girls would come on up to the front. While they're making their way up, the recognition is for making it to the state championship game. They were the New Mexico AA state runner-up. Outstanding achievement. Most people only dream of making it to the big dance, the championship game, and these girls have represented not only their community but our district. All right, so what we'll do is, I will announce the names. If you will come up, shake each board member's and superintendent's hand, and we'd like to honor you with a little token of our appreciation and a congratulations on behalf of all Galtman Kinney County Schools. If I butcher your name, please bear with me. First off, Kerry Celestewa. Manager Unit Baca. Gera Celenda. Rene Francis. Angel Antonio. Abukol. Courtney Lewis. Talia Heron. Deborah McMahon. Kaylee Calastiwa. Hannah Clausen. Annika Pat. Leslie Gabeldon. Jade Lewis. We have assistant coach Richard Levan. And head coach, who also made coach of the year for the four corners area, Alejandro Rivera. All right, girls, if you and the coaches will line up by the school board members, we'd like to get a group picture right quick. Congratulations, girls. Very, very proud of you. Next, if I could have the Navajo Pine Boys Cross Country Team make your way up front. This is in recognition for being the 2017 Class A double A New Mexico State Champions. Again, an outstanding accomplishment. Gentlemen, coaches, we're very proud of you and your accomplishments, so we'd like to offer you a token of our appreciation. Arsenio Sinagini. Dominique Kleekie. Galvin Curly. Carlisle Francisco. Morales Chief. Micah Sosi. Michael Marshall. Preston Kito. And Sheldon James. Again, last but not least, the two people that led them there, Assistant Sean Manulito. And the state championship coach, Kylie Thompson. Outstanding job. Again, something that you will cherish and the community will cherish for the rest of your lives. Outstanding performance. If you guys will come up, we'll get a group photo. Thank you very, very much.
Chat, thank you. To our kids, our students, good job. And the coaches, and especially the parents for supporting your kids. Let's go down to item three, approval of meeting minutes. Superintendent Hyatt?
President Long, members of the board, if we could look over these minutes, there's a few changes that I know that I have for myself, and also I believe there's a few board members that want to make some corrections. So Evelyn, members of the board.
I'll go ahead and...
I can go to the end.
Okay, I have a couple too, sir. Mine is under new business A, where it says, "Priscilla Manulito discussed the conflict of interest concerns." I would like that to be changed to, "Priscilla Manulito asked for clarification if there was any conflict of interest with the Metecon J representing us as our lobbyists and also being lobbyists of the Southern African Nation." And that clarification was made, but that's the first one. And then the second one is, under new business again, B, when we're having a discussion, excuse me, there's a couple of things that, it says, "Ms. Manulito stressed the importance of offering opportunities in the rural areas, how to get school, how they will get to the school, and if lunch was included." I know that one of my concerns were that middle college, middle college high does not have transportation for our rural areas. That was one of my first concerns. The other one was that the enrollment that middle college has does not match the demographics of our school district, which I think it was in their grant proposal or something, that they had to have pretty, a good, a good range of our demographics. And with us being 79% Native Americans and their percentage at 30-something, that was another concern I had. And I would like those two to be implemented into my statement that I made. Thank you.
Okay.
President Long, members of the board, a couple items for me on the minutes. Section B under reports, we're about fourth paragraph, second line, paragraph starts, starts the middle college high schools enrollment. Towards the end of that second line, it talks about the funds were used elsewhere, and I'd like to strike, which indicates poor planning. I did not state that it indicates poor planning. It was uncertain. So I'd like that striked in the record.
Okay.
And on the next page over, this is new business, section A, it's on the back page or at the beginning. I was asked for whether I support the contract renewal, and I acknowledge that I support it. Unless somebody else wants to claim this, I think it was a topic of discussion, but I am familiar with a lobbyist job and what it entails during legislative session and during the interim, because I work with lobbyists regularly. So I did not state that I was not familiar with their job duties. You can have that striked.
Mr. President, and I will vouch for Mr. Hyatt, that the two that he indicated are correct. He did not use that language in the first report, and also he, we all know that he is familiar with the duties of our lobbyists. Thank you, sir.
Hakkashi. Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes. It might make sense with some of the changes that we're suggesting to these minutes, it might make sense to hold off on approving the minutes, let them be rewritten based on the video, and then, and then go from there. That way, I mean, because I, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't remember everything that was said, and I certainly don't remember the context. It just, it just might make sense to rewrite, hold off on approving these. Let's rewrite them and bring them up for a vote in the next, in the next meeting.
I agree.
That's the way it works.
Yeah, normally that's how it works.
A lot of these are not word for word, and so sometimes intent is not quite caught. So I appreciate that.
So what we'll do with the meeting minutes is just do the corrections tonight, and then defer approval of the meeting minutes to the next meeting.
We'll table the December 11th meeting minutes, is what we're talking about?
Yeah, just defer, defer to the next meeting.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we, that we vote to table these, the approval of these meeting minutes.
Okay. Motion's been made to table the meeting minutes from the December 11th Board of Education meeting. The corrections that have been brought up, that will be, I guess, changes made in the meeting minutes to reflect what was brought out, and then we'll do the approval of the meeting minutes at the next meeting. So that's, motion been made. Roll call, Evelyn?
Kevin Mitchell?
Yes.
Priscilla Manulito?
Yes.
Michael Shaw?
Yes.
Charles Long?
Yes. We've approved the corrections, and next meeting we will approve the meeting minutes after the corrections have been made. Thank you, board members. Let's go down to item number four, approval of the consent agenda items. And when we approved the meeting, or approved the agenda, board member Priscilla Manulito requested to have item E pulled from consent agenda. So that's not going to be in the approval of the consent agenda items. What is the pleasure of the board?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items with the deletion of E.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Roll call?
Kevin Mitchell?
Yes.
Priscilla Manulito?
I do approve it, but I just have one question. On C, number two, what does N A E A stand for, please?
This is Dr. White.
You can get back to me.
I'm sure they'll get back with you, Priscilla.
Yes, yes.
From now on, we'll spell out those acronyms to make sure that you have a name of the confidence.
Yes.
Never know, it might be New Drink or something, and we're approving it.
I know.
So, Hakkashi?
Did you find it? Okay.
Ms. Grabat is an art teacher at Crown Point, and that is the National Art Education Association.
Thank you very much.
Roll call. Approving the consent agenda items.
Priscilla Manulito?
Yes.
Okay, and Chris Mortensen?
Yes.
And Charles Long?
Yes.
Okay, I still need to call Michael Shaw.
Yes.
So, okay now. Let's go down to item number five, study circle, public comment. Kevin Billy?
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Hyatt, and the board. My name is Kevin Billy. I'm here on behalf of my son to address an issue that I need to, forward this letter to Mr. Hyatt. I am asking for an investigation because I am not satisfied with the response that Galt High School has brought forth to us as a parent. My son is a, was a Galt High School student up to November 1st of 2017, and was an honest student with good grades and involved in some activities at Galt High School. We brought forth the complaint to Galt High School, white, principal, vice principal, athletic director, and basketball coach. My son's weight was questioned. It was brought demeaning upon him because of his weight. His weight was mentioned as well as slander, discrimination, mental abuse, and emotional stress. He has enclosed himself in his heart to really know what his feeling is today. This is very hard. We went down the chain of command, wrote letters, and sent them to all the responding people, but we got no response. Finally, the letter was sent just stating that we need to get over this issue and move on with our lives. We sent our students to Galt, or the school districts or schools, to get educated, to participate in the events that they love to be part of, and not be discriminated against because of their weight as to this issue. My son's weight, again, was questioned, was brought, emotional stress, mental abuse, again, like slander. Trying to participate in the events, the activities that our students, our kids love to be part of, but then get brought back down by the, because of their weight. The higher rates of suicide in Kinney County, along with alcohol abuse, abuse, is not being considered, and then most of all, is because of weight. Weight. It's a very emotional part of something when you're discriminated against because of your weight, and something that you love to do and be part of, but then get brought back down because of your weight. Everybody loves to eat. Everybody, you know, we all love to eat. But just because of weight, you get melted from something that you love to do is discriminatory. And we brought this letter here to bring forth to Mr. Hyatt because we asked this issue to be investigated more, because we are not satisfied with the response that was given us, to us by Galt High School.
Hakkashi. Thank you, Mr. White. Thank you. Andrea Thomas?
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Mr. Hyatt, President Mr. Long. I just came over here to, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Hyatt and Ms. Manulito and Mr. Mitchell for attending Tohatchee High School and their presentation of their, the girl, Lady Cougar, statements. It was, it's nice when... It was, um, it's nice when you guys come out and get involved like that into the schools, and you appreciate your stu-, the students at the schools and stuff, so. They, I've heard comments that the girls really, um, appreciated that, that you guys came out and you were there to share that with them, that moment with them. And I also like to say Happy New Year, and, um, I was gonna, um, state, Mr. Long, where he said, "For 2018, we can try and make this a better, the best, um, school district." I thought we were the best, but, according to just hearing Mr. Billy's, uh, concern, you know, things like this, um, they can get blown up, you know? Just one thing like this will affect the Gallup McKinley County Schools. So hopefully, um, you take care and help Mr. Billy and his son. It's really, um, how would you say, these young students, especially the ones that are still in school and stuff, you know, when they're brought down like this, um, it's not very, very good, you know? When they get demeaning, and, um, that's what leads to a lot of suicide, you know? And that's not what we want within our district and stuff. Thank you.
Hakashi Doa, thank you. Kelly Mortensen?
How y'all doing? Um, uh, my name's Kelly Mortensen, I'm a private citizen, and I, I had an idea, and I just couldn't get rid of it. I, uh, I wanna tell you my idea, I wanna tell you some of my thought processes, and, um, the murder of Lisa Romero was a unspeakable trauma on the family. It was a national tragedy that, you know, hit in the heart of our community and in this school district. I knew her at JFK, I didn't really know her at, uh, at Mi'am Mira High School. Um, her husband Chris coached my son in baseball, so we, we all know everybody, safe to say everyone was touched by that tragedy. When that, uh, you know, when that happens, we're left to, to make sense of it. She's gone, and she's done, uh, and, and so, we ask, you know, why did this happen? In my opinion, with the passage of time, it's that this person mattered. That whether you're a secretary, or a superintendent, or a parent, or a student, or a janitor, uh, we all wonder if our, if our contribution matters, and, uh, I think it's plain to see through Ms. Romero's example that, that, uh, she loved her job, and that she made a difference. I noticed, uh, why don't we play? It was just a sadness. Usually when we play soccer, it's just fun, it's joyful, and, and this week was a chore. We went to Aztec, and we beat Aztec one to zero in a war. And we came back and we played Bloomfield, and, go ahead and hit the spacebar on that. This is our, uh, end of the game, late in the day, just a brutal game, and, uh, it's zero zero at this point. And, uh, Jacob loses the ball to Josiah, who goes back to Alfonso Murillo. Josiah drops back, and Alfonso hits him with a pass, and Josiah's gonna just pound the goal. And the crowd erupts. I filmed this, and, uh, I didn't really see it till I was editing the video, and I, I put this celebration in. Um, it was just, I don't know, just watch it, they celebrate, but just watch their actions. Go ahead and hit the spacebar. Anyway, so this impressed me that, that she made a difference. Sixteen and seventeen-year-old boys are hard to impress, and, uh, it was just amazing to watch these guys for this week. We came back down to earth, we lost to the worst team in the district, and, and we just missed Golden State. That's, uh, that's neither here nor there. Um, so my idea, so, you know what, I felt like I needed to do something, and, and so I started thinking about this, and the next thing that happened, everyone was complaining about the boardman construction. Two point seven million dollars improvements, and people were complaining because it was congested, which is by design, they said they put that road on a diet so that it would. People would slow down, and we don't kill people out there. Your kids will get there safe, and, uh, and I, and once it all, you know, they got the traffic control out, it was, it was nice to see, and I really felt proud of that, and I valued that, that, uh, project. And as I drove there, I saw those new streetlights, and it occurred to me that, that, you know, that's a facility we could name, um, or, that we could name that street that turns into Central Office, Miss Lisa Lane. Take this, you guys can't really, well, maybe you got, you guys can see up here. Miss Lisa Lane goes all the way around, and it circles Mi'am Mira High School. And, uh, I thought the symbolism was great, that she is over the school, and that, uh, she would be, you know, there forever. This is my, you know, my idea for the name, um, you know, you could call it any number of things, but I like, uh, I talked to the family, and, and that's what she was known to, her students, Miss Lisa, and it's also, uh, play on words, Miss Lisa. And if the, the traffic is congested, everyone's gonna be stopped there, and they're gonna see that sign every time they come in here. And, uh, hopefully it makes them think, and it makes you do a better job, and, uh, we're educators, so, um, it will help us educate. It helps the school system, um, it's a facility worthy of her service. There's no name, no claim on this road, so, you guys can just do it. I know there's some policies about, about, uh, time duration, uh. I talked to the state traffic engineer, and they said they, they'll put the signs up if you just, you direct them to do so. Basically, for signage, it would just be a, you know, a sign on to turn into Central Office, and then on the other side, it's just a, it's a T, uh, you know, two signs. I encourage you guys to make it happen, I, it was my idea, and now it's gone, I feel a lot better. It's up to you guys to make it happen, make it pretty, you know, it's not very, it's functional right now, but it's just not, I mean, you can make it pretty, a pretty entryway, sidewalks, curbs, whatever, whatever it takes to make that, uh... And that is all that I have, I appreciate your help. If you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Board members, questions?
We can't engage, we're in public comment. But we can, we can get back to those, the public complaints today.
What's that?
We can get back to all the people that did public complaints today, on their questions, and if this is considered, we would look at it for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Probably the second meeting in February. So. Okay, uh, be up for discussion, the second meeting that we'll have in February. Let's go down to reports. Mike?
President Long, members of the Board, um, I'll turn my time over to the Indian Education Committee, um, for India-, Indian Education Report, we try to do these reports quarterly, and so, I wanna give them time to speak this evening, and so, I'm not sure who's all gonna come up, but we have several people here, including Carmen Moffett and some of the IEC presidency, almost all the IEC presidency for Gallup McKinley County Schools.
Good evening, Board members, Mr. Hyatt, Mr. Long, Priscilla, Kevin, Michael, and Christopher. Uh, my name is Georgiana Destodario, I am the Vice President of the IEC. I wanna tell you guys good, good evening, and thank you for having us here, and we'll start by introductions.
Good evening, my name's Rebecca Nez, um, I represent Tohachi Elementary and Tohachi High. I'm the IEC Treasurer, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Tiffany Plummer, I'm the Indian Education Committee Secretary, and I represent Del Norte Elementary.
Thank you. Ms. Moffett actually stepped out for a couple minutes, she went to go print the papers that we were gonna pass out. And, um, in place, our Mo-, our President Monica, uh, is unable to attend, so if you could please excuse her this evening. But on behalf of the IEC, um, just to let you know that we always have you on our agenda, our next meeting's this Saturday on the 13th, and we're gonna start at 10:00 AM, and I want to extend an invitation to each and every one of you, you are more than welcome to come, if you have any questions, you will be, will feel free to answer. If we can answer them, if we can't, we'll look for an answer. But I wanna thank you for having us tonight, and Mr. Hyatt for opening up your time to us and extending us your time, Mr. Hyatt, I appreciate it. Ms. Moffett? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read, um, Monica Yasi, our IEC President's report. To Board of Directors, from Monica Aliasi, IEC President, Parents, regards the I-, Indian Education Committee Board Report. Board of Directors, first of all, I would like to address a great support that you have given us since the beginning of the school year. We have working, we have been working with Mr. Hyatt since he has been appointed to the superintendent position. There has been some minor issues from a few parents, but nothing that cannot be resolved diplomatically. The working communication between Mr. Hyatt's staff and the Indian education is at an acceptable level from previous years, and we expect that to continue. We appreciate the superintendent's attendance at our IEC meetings and letting the IEC JOM parents express their issues and concerns with the school they represent or regard to their own child or children. The IEC JOM parent has attended some training regarding the JOM Government-to-Government Conference, and have performed monitoring activities at their schools. On another note, we are awaiting Mr. Vern Baez regarding his PAC meeting, approval of bylaws, and et cetera. And he may be actively busy with his new assignments, however, I believe that this should have been completed last year. We pass our bylaws with some amendments and changes necessary to properly operate the program. Recently, we have, we had to address a few complaints we, we, complaints as we hold our parents to the Code of Conduct, my apologies, and if they have issues and concerns, there is a process of chain of command before it comes to the Board of Directors or to the Navajo Nation JOM. Our funding is about fifty percent spent, which we feel is making great progress on how we support our language and culture teachers in the classroom. Thank you for your continued support and the time for my report. Best regards, Ms. Monica Yasi, Parent, IEC President. Ms. Moffett?
Good evening, Mr. Mr. Long, Board members, and Mr. Hyatt. Um, this evening, we'd just like to share some information for, for your, for your information. The Navajo Nation JOM monitoring, uh, visit is done every year, they do two visits. One of them is the program visit, and the second one is the fiscal financial visit. We have a monitoring on the program side, I believe, that's being scheduled for February the 12th and the 13th. And those are the two days that they will be coming to our school district to monitor and look at documents, IEC signing sheets, the agendas, the minutes. And they'll be visiting schools, and the schools that have been selected are Tohachi Schools, Albry School, and, uh, Twin Lakes, as well as Intell Schools. And, uh, we are also, uh, the Navajo Nation also will be hosting a subcontractors regional meeting that will be taking place next month in Holbrook. And they also hold these regional meetings for subcontractors, which is us, our school district. Um, and, uh, they provide opportunity to give us technical assistance. We are in the process of, um, of starting our JOM application, at least the planning of our JOM application. First of all, the last IEC meeting, the IEC, uh, finalized their final draft for the needs assessment. Uh, they will look at their needs assessment one more time at this meeting on Saturday, which is on January 13th at 10:00 AM here, and we invite IEC, uh, Board members to please come to our meetings as well. The needs assessment identifies the priorities of the JOM application. We identify the priorities that will be included in the education plan, so that's a very important process that our IEC, um, take part in every year. We also have the Navajo Language Activities Festival that will be starting pretty soon. This is a collaborative effort between myself, the Indian Education Committee members, and, um, in this case, this year would be Mr. Vern Baez. We'll be working collaboratively to plan, um, the Navajo Language and Culture Festivals that we hold and host every year. So we're really looking for that, that's a great celebration that we have, um, every year, so we're looking forward. Um, and those are the only announcements that I have to share with the Board of Education, thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions, comments, Board members?
I have a question, um, or, or, not a question, but actually a statement. We're, I think one important thing that's happening statewide is our, hi Monica! The statewide that's happening, um, is the fifteen-year celebration of the Indian Education Act in Santa Fe. And I know we have individuals in our district like Ms. Sandra Lee, um, I mean, Ms., Ms., um, Freeland, Sandra Freeland, sorry, that took part in those, um, uh, when the, when the Act was first initiated. And I'm hoping that we see some of our IEC members, um, at that celebration to, um, in, in Santa Fe also. I think that's a very important, um, celebration that we should be all celebrating. Um, I know the other thing that I wanted to mention, and I attended two meetings now, they're called tri-group meetings, um, that we have at, they've been meeting at, at Yambato, but it's for Church Rock, um, they invited the Rue, Pruitt, Pinedale, um, in, in the surrounding areas of the one hundred and, one hundred and fifty anniversary of the Long Walk. And that's gonna be this year also, and I'm, I'm hoping that that discussion, because I didn't, just with the, 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 the meetings that we've been having, there's things that they're bringing out that I didn't even know, because that, that wasn't even something that was discussed in, um, our school at, at all. And I think just the resiliency of our tribe and the endurance that they had to overcome, should, we should at least, um, put that in our history classes and into our language and culture classroom of what our nation, our Navajo Nation's doing this huge event on it also. And I don't know if that's something that we can continue, um, to educate our children on. And I don't know if that's something that we can continue, um, to educate our children on. Uh, but those were the two things I wanted to mention, is the Indian Edu- Indian Education Act celebration, and also the one hundred and fifty anniversary of the Long Walk. And if we can incorporate that somehow into our district and into our Indian education to educate our children about. I didn't even know there was three routes. I didn't even know that. I didn't know our people had three routes that they, they were led on, forced to be led on, so. Um, but thank you very much for, um, and thank you, Mr. Hyatt, um, for continuing to help our IEC. And I am very interested on being there on Saturday, so I will be there Saturday. Is that potlot again? Okay.
Goshen, other comments, questions, board members? Ete no'ea, any closing remarks?
Um, I just wanted to thank you. Um, I was trying to get here as quickly as I could, and I appreciate all my officers here for all the support they give me and how we conduct our meetings. We changed a lot of things on how we should conduct ourselves based on the Code of Conduct. And that was where I put in here as quickly as I could, just to make sure I got my report. But I really appreciate Mr. Hyatt's support, again, for all he does, and bridging that gap that we've had in the past in the many years that we were trying to come together as one, and I really appreciate all he does for us. So with that, I appreciate all of the Board of Directors here as well. Thank you.
Goshen.
One more thing, Monica, your officers and your director did a fabulous job today in Win- um, in Winter Rock, um, representing our district with the HES committee, the Health, Education, and Human Service Committee Meeting today. Um, we were all there, and I'm, I'm just very thankful that they were there to represent, um, our IEC parents. And thank you so much for that. And I, there's a lot of emphasis from our council delegates about revitalizing our language and our culture. And you guys are a big part of that, so jahat for that.
Thank you.
President Long, members of the board, um, begin my report. I wanted to give, I should've saved it so that Monica could make her own time.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, but I appreciate the support of the IEC, um, Monica. Good things are happening in that committee, and positive changes are being made. We appreciate their, their hard work as parents in, in our district. I want to mention a few things, uh, before we go on to your board reports. Just really quickly, let you know the legislative session starts here, middle of this month. Last, most interesting thing that I've heard is legislators, several of them are proposing a significant increase to education, close to two, two-hundred million. I'm just shy of that. And the State Department, last I heard, and Governor are proposing a flat increase from last year, and so the negotiation begins. So we'll be heavily involved in advocating for those bills that support Gallo McKinley County students, and making sure that we work with our legislators, who have been very supportive over the years, and have been very supportive this year, in helping us move things forward that benefit our students, not only here, but across the state of New Mexico. Second thing I wanted to mention is that the strategic planning session is continuing. Um, as you know, trying to arrange schedules sometimes becomes difficult, uh, but we have, I believe, located a day here in the first of February. I'll let you know about that day. You're welcome to attend if we need to public, publicly post that meeting, we can. But as we mentioned last time, that we would continue from here as administration and work with our strategic planning people that we're working with, the Kileys, uh, to move things forward in respect to developing that strategic plan. And I'll continue to give you updates. I just wanted to let you know, I was hoping to be done in September. Obviously, it's taken some time. I project that we'll, we'll be finished this next semester at some point, and be able to have a strategic plan, uh, for the next three to five years. As going along with what's talked about a little bit thus far, uh, we, as in the past, I've mentioned to the public and to the board that we are working to incorporate cultural relevance in our curriculum for the core areas. And so that is moving forward. At this time, we, I believe, just secured our consultant to help us as we continue to do that. And this is an important piece in making sure that we build relevance for our curriculum, so that teachers have easy access, easier access to those resources and with help from the JOM funding and other funding sources to provide the materials that is needed for those curriculum, those curriculum pieces. So we are excited for that. In addition, we completed our math, English, science, and social studies curriculum equitably, as much as we possibly can, so students have access to certification, licensure, and other things regarding them being prepared and ready for the workforce as soon as, for all students across McKinley County. And, uh, logistically, McKinley Academy will help in that process, since transportation will be taken care of. There's a whole host of issues. As we wrap up this month, I will give another report on McKinley Academy to give the details and provide you other documents. You have a good understanding of what's happening, so that as you get questions in the community, you understand, um, some of the details of what's happening with our academy that's coming next year at NTU and also U N M. And the last thing, I just want to let you know that last year, we purchased vehicles for many of the county schools, and we replaced several more vehicles, not only in town, but also made sure that every school in the county had a new vehicle, four-wheel drive, to make sure that we're transporting students safely and that our homeschool liaisons have good transportation, appropriate transportation. And we are, have already received some of our buses that we ordered also, and Suburbans, and so those will be hitting the road soon, if they haven't already. We are looking for drivers, and so anybody out in the community who knows somebody who can drive, uh, some of those Suburbans, we don't need a CDL in order to drive those. And so it might be a little easier for some people to be able to work for us in that capacity. And that's all I have on the For You Board and the community. If there's any questions, I'll take those, and if not, we'll move on to the board report.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Questions? Board members? Na'riya, goshen. I, I know the academy, that's one thing that we really need to push, uh, and get it started. That way, we will be able to keep the money in the district. And, um, I think we're gonna do a better job with that. Um, let's go down to board reports. Board members, reports?
Um, Mr. President, um, I really don't have a report at this time, but, you know, I would just like to say that, you know, I, I really see and would like to thank, um, our superintendent and his whole administration for the collaboration, the communication, and the transparency that they're putting forth through our district. Um, you know, and I'm seeing this academy, um, that, um, that is being pushed at a fast pace, um, even it's being pushed at a fast pace at this time. Everything seems to be in order, um, you know, everything seems to be going well. You know, even seeing the advertisements in the paper, um, in the Gallup Sun, you know, just looking at that is very, very positive. And looking at career pathways, you know, that is something that's way overdue, and I appreciate everything that's being done, um, in order to, um, help our students in this district to be better educated. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
Um, I just have my report too. I'll mention a couple of things. Um, one is the, I attended the Navajo Nation State Task Force, um, meeting that Mateka and Jay, um, coordinated at Fire Rock with our legislators. And I'm very happy that Representative Alcone, Senator Sanchez, Senator Menos, Representative Johnson, and Representative Garcia, um, were present at that meeting. And we also had, um, about five or six council delegates that came out, um, for that meeting. And their objectives or their priorities, um, for education, um, is exactly similar, or I shouldn't say exactly, they're similar to ours. Um, one of their major legislation topics are cyberbullying, harassment, bullying prevention, language and culture preservation, bilingual and multicultural program, um, public education funding, cross-state, um, boundaries, student admission, um, cross-state boundaries, transportation, impact aid as it relates to boundary issues, and suicide prevention. And we, those are the areas that, um, you know, we, we are also looking into. So I'm very thankful that their concerns and their priorities match what we're doing. The other thing is today, as I mentioned, um, the HES committee meeting, we went there and reported on the McKinley Academy, and the committee wa- had several questions for us, and I'm very fortunate, uh, Mr. Hyatt and his staff attended to help, um, answer those questions. So that was a good, um, way. We also had Navajo Times there, that I'm pretty sure will do, um, a report on it too for us, to help us also to get the news out there about this new program that we're implementing. Uh, and I also want to say thank you to our PR, um, within our district. There's so many positive things that are being out there, sent through Facebook, sent through newspaper, radio, and that's just so good to see out there now, the positive that's happening in our district. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Jahat, thank you, Priscilla. I think, um, um, one state senator we need to get involved is Beni Shando. Um, I haven't hear anything from him, but he represents a portion of, of our area. And he needs to get involved in what we're doing as a school district. I don't, uh, some of the initiatives that, that you brought up, Priscilla. The Navajo Nation Council usually, um, whenever there's a legislation, uh, that they're proposing, they give a five-day comment period. Maybe that's something that you can look into and, uh, and try to, uh, form a comment with, uh, Mr. Hyatt on some of those issues. So, ede'ute, anybody else?
The only thing I have to report is I attended the graduation ceremonies for U N M Gallup and Middle College at, uh, Amira High School last week.
Okay, e'to'ya, everybody done? Okay, goshen. For myself, we're supposed to have a follow-up meeting, uh, at Mariano Lake, having to do with the N H A, Navajo Housing Authority subdivision out there. There's only one road going in and out of that subdivision. And it creates, when the buses, during the school year, uh, school years or school months, um, we have about ten buses that go into that subdivision. And it creates, um, a congestion, and it also creates a safety hazard. And we've been, uh, Superintendent Hyatt, myself, and the chapter officials from, uh, Mariano Lake, we've been trying to address that. And, uh, we're supposed to meet with them again today, but they said it was gonna be moved up some times, either this week or next week, so we didn't have the meeting. But what they're trying to do is establish another entrance or exit into that subdivision and making an area where buses, uh, would be able to load the kits in a safer manner. So that's what I have to report, uh, for myself. Jahat. Let's, uh, number four is just notices and communication. Uh, first one is January fifteenth. Remember, that's Martin Luther King Day. It doesn't, it's not milk. Holiday, no school. And then we have, uh, the twenty-fifth Native American Day at the Roundhouse. And then on, on February first, Gallup Day, at, uh, February fifth is our next regular Board of Education meeting. And parent-teacher conferences. Uh, February eighth through the tenth, uh, New Mexico School Board Association Board Institute. February nineteenth, President's Day, no school. February twentieth, our next, uh, Board of Education meeting. Right. And, uh, we go to all business, there's none, let's go to...
Mr. Long?
Yes.
During the, that meeting that I went to with the legislature, legislators, um, I mentioned that Gallup Day, and one of them corrected me and told me, uh, we're trying to get away from saying Gallup Day. They want McKinley County, or McKinley County Day, is what they're calling it, and not Ga- McGallup Day, because, uh, one thing he told me was Gallup is not the only entity of this, um, day. We represent the county, so they're, they're using, and I think that's how it's written in the, um, agenda, or the thing, the events that are happening at the state level. So, um, it's McKinley Day, McKinley County Day.
Okay.
So that's what they told me. So I'm just want that clarification. Thank you.
Goshen, ja. New business. Item A, Superintendent Hyatt?
Yeah, President Long, members of the board, um, as you know, we regularly grant waivers or look at granting waivers for spouses and family members and people working in different capacities for our district. Mrs. Hanks, could you come up in case anybody has any questions on A? Uh, and also, if we could also address the same time B, since it is also another waiver granting. Just ask you if you have any questions.
Mr. Long, I did have, um, questions on this, and my questions were answered, and I would like to go ahead and approve, motion to approve A and B, please.
Goshen, motions been made by Priscilla Manuelito to approve, um, action items A and B. Roll call, Evelyn?
Kevin Mitchell?
Yes.
Priscilla Manuelito?
Yes.
Michael Shaw?
Yes.
Chris Mortensen?
Yes.
Charles Long?
Yes.
Okay, Jahat, thank you, board members. Uh, yeah, A and B.
They have to be separate.
You want, you want to do it separate?
They have to be, I mean, I talked, I'm sorry, I talked about them together, but we need to do the roll call first, or the motion first.
Okay.
B, then.
Kevin Mitchell?
Yes.
Priscilla Manuelito?
Yes.
Michael Shaw?
Yes.
Chris Mortensen?
Yes.
And Charles Long?
Okay, let's... Let's go to item C under new business.
President Long, as, and members of the board, you have the information in your packet regarding memorandum of understanding between Gallo McKinley County Schools and through Community Center. This is a suicide prevention support, basically MOU, that we, we'd like to have between the Community Center and through middle school and through, we want to, you to look for other opportunities in addition to this one to make sure that we have as many supports as possible, especially when it comes to partnerships. And, uh, I don't know if anybody had any questions or any comments or concerns that we could address.
I think it's, uh, um, something that would be very beneficial to, um, the Rue School, but it's kind of like a motion to approve.
Goshen, uh, motion's been made to approve item C. Uh, roll call, Evelyn?
Kevin Mitchell?
Yes.
Priscilla Manuelito?
I abstain.
Michael Shaw?
Yes.
Chris Mortensen?
Yes.
And Charles Long?
Yes.
We've approved that action item. Let's go down to action item D.
President Long, members of the board, I believe we've talked about this earlier in the school year. We are working very hard to try to provide more opportunities for our teacher, teachers to become T-Sol endorsed. And so we have put together a pretty aggressive plan to make sure that we encourage our teachers, um, to have those skills and develop those, um, I guess, repertoire of making sure that we teach students better and provide those, uh, the... students better and provide those, the lesson plans and those types of things to ensure that we are, making sure those students have English as a second language to help them perform better in the school and in their education. So we have an agreement that we're proposing between us and San Juan College, and this is for, so that our teachers can enroll in their college and receive the coursework, because it does take, I believe, 12 credit hours in order to get endorsed in TSAL. And San Juan has worked very well with us in setting up this program. We're actually using our employees, as I believe, as adjunct professors at San Juan College to teach these courses, two of the courses. And so this is just an agreement between us and San Juan College to continue that effort to help our teachers.
Gushin. Comments, questions?
Answered.
Are we working with any other university on these TSAL endorsements besides San Juan College?
Not directly. San Juan, with this particular initiative, it's specifically with San Juan College.
And when I was reading this, it says that the teachers that are interested in pursuing these TSAL endorsements would have to pay for it, and then we reimburse the teachers.
Correct.
So how much estimating does it cost that they need to come up upfront with first before we reimburse them?
I want to ask Dr. White to come up and address that question specifically, or Sandra Freeland, one of the two boards are here. While they're deciding who's going to come up and talk about that, I also want to add, I'll fill in a little bit of time here, but we're also...
Don't worry, that's the only question I have.
Well, the both, the both of them can come up. Sandra and Polena.
You should put some money on the counter there, they jump up the quick. But while they're coming up, I also want to add that we're also trying to incentivize it as much as possible to help them. So while they're completing their coursework, we're also offering an addenda for them. And then upon a completion, as you mentioned, we will reimburse that, the successful completion of the course. We can't reimburse if they fail the course, so.
Ladies?
Good evening, board members, superintendent, distinguished guests, audience, parents, welcome. Dr. White is submitting out to you a brochure that the teachers have. So this gives an overview of the cost registration process. So the San Juan College has a competitive rate, and our in-state tuition for our teachers is $220 for the credit with three hours. The online course is 215. Out-of-state tuition's 580. And so when you look at an upper-level course, this is a reasonable rate considering a post-bachelors or a graduate-level endorsement, which is usually 700 to 800 to over $1,000 per class. And that's the fee that our teachers pay. San Juan's a public college, so other educators in our county are also invited if they want, but the MOU is between McKinley County and San Juan for our teachers who are employed in our district.
Any other questions? Yes.
Yeah, so is this information already out there, or are we waiting for the approval of the MOU first? I mean, to our teachers, do our teachers know that this is...
Yes, teachers have access to this. It's on our Title III webpage. We're entering into our second cohort. Our first cohort was in the summer of 2017. We had 17 students complete the one course, 13 completed both courses. So we started our second cohort where we have 14. And so we have an estimated 29 teachers who should complete their endorsement by May.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you. So what is it, a pleasure of the board?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding between San Juan College and Gallup McKinley County Schools.
A motion's been made. Michael Shaw, roll call, Evelyn?
Mike, Kevin Mitchell?
Yes.
Priscilla Manuelito?
Yes.
Michael Shaw?
Yes.
Chris Mortensen?
Yes.
And Charles Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. We approve that. Let's go down to item E. Mike?
President Long, members of the board, final item, invite Gerald Horacek to come up, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. He's going to talk a little bit about this, but in general, this is, we need to put a letter of intent together so that we can request funds through the ESA.
Apply for funds, yes, that's correct. Superintendent Hyatt, President Long, members of the board, two different proposals we can apply for. The state determines the schools. So for one of them, it's three schools, Catherine Miller, Gallup, Central High, and Mi'amira. And the requirements for that are, the state has data that says they are, Catherine Miller's among the lowest-performing 5% of Title I schools in the state, so they can apply. And then Gallup, Central High, and Mi'amira have a graduation rate that is 67% or below, so they qualify for that. And that's what we're asking for tonight for those particular schools. It's just money they give you to help improve your schools. Any questions on that particular one?
Questions, comments, board members?
I motion to approve.
Okay, motion made.
There's, there's two parts to it.
All you're doing is applying, right?
Yeah, it's simply, you'll sign a letter of intent to apply. But if you want to jump into it, unless you have anything else to add, Mr. Horacek?
No, if you want to, and then we will apply for it, and the deadline is, I think, I don't, don't hold me to this, I think around February 2nd or 12th, one of those two, the schools will apply and the district will apply.
And the letter of intent is for tomorrow, we've...
Right.
So, yeah.
We're good? I like that, right?
So, so the motion is accepted?
Sir, before roll call, even, even though this is good funding and we need this to for school improvement, you know, those are still worrisome statistics that you provided us. I would like to continue to have follow-up and reports on these three schools that you mentioned, the 5% and then also the 67%. Those are concerning to me, and one of my schools is Gallup Central, and I think that we need to, you know, continue to have some kind of updates on those, sir.
And then there's, I just want to be clear real quick, then there's a different set that qualifies for a different type of monies. And so that's Crown Pointale, Roosevelt Elementary, Stagecoach Elementary, Twin Lakes, Crown Point High, Thiru High, Tohatchie Middle, and Thiru Middle. And that's a different set of monies. They're not in the lowest-performing schools, but it's a different set of groups of Title I schools that can apply for a different set of monies at the same time. And we'll definitely update you on that.
So I know like 21st Century Grant that we used to get at Thiru Middle School. Once you start doing good, and our grades went up, they took away the money. So is this kind of the same thing that they're going to do once we start doing good, they're going to take these funds from us?
My understanding is that both are for a block of time. So if you get it, one of them, you get it for two years regardless of what happens. And the other one, I, I don't want to, I think it's three to four years block of time regardless of how well you do. You get the money for that guaranteed amount of time.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Not, we do have a standing motion. Roll call, Evelyn?
Kevin Mitchell?
Yes.
Priscilla Manuelito?
Um, yes.
Michael Shaw?
Yes.
Chris Mortensen?
Yes.
Charles Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. Yeah. Let's go down to the item that was pulled from consent agenda item. Superintendent, the next meeting, okay.
Mr. President, I would like to motion to adjourn.
Gushin. Motion is made to adjourn. Roll call?
Kevin Mitchell?
Yes.
Priscilla Manuelito?
Yes.
Michael Shaw?
Yes.
Chris Mortensen?
Yes.
And Charles...